Those are the questions we got in advance. We may have time to take some additional questions, but I wouldn't have prepared answers. And the first question came from David, which which I sort of briefly answered him in an email, but I thought we should include the question in the Q and A because it's it's an interesting one. And David asked, I just wanted to ask, as I'm curious, does the DPRK have an online have online delivery services like how China, Russia and most of the world, including its allies does? I'm just asking, has not seen anything about it on KC TV yet, which has made me curious. Well, my answer is was even back in September 2012, when I was visiting the DPRK, I witnessed for myself my young lady guide ordered a new trousers online. And our driver later handed her a package. I think it came quite quickly. So, you know, it was matching Amazon, as it were, but you know, one perhaps that is not perhaps a good comparison. In fact, the DPRK takes e-commerce, as it's called, very seriously and is expanding it. On the 26th of February 2015, the Yongfun Business Information Technology Centre, the DPRK, opened the website Manmiz Sang Electronic Commerce Site on the DPRK's internal internet work. The website stated, and I quote, "At present, the centre has got a perfect electronic commercial system, equipped with an electronic settlement system, in other words, online payments, and a delivery system, and is expanding its operation as befits its position as the top electronic commerce business in the country." And I'll just if copy the link to their website and drop it in the chat for people to see. And the second question is from our organisation secretary, Alan, which again is a good a good question. Are there parts of With the Century covering the period of building up socialism like 1945 till latest? Which are the parts? Are they in English? Any link? Well, the answer is unfortunately President Kim Il-sung actually passed away before he in 1994, before he could complete the writing of With the Century, which would which would have covered the period of socialist construction and building of the New People's Korea after 1945. However, the DPRK is publishing the complete works of President Kim Il-sung, which includes virtually every single article he wrote, different writings and speeches. And in fact, these contain very detailed information. So far, only three, maybe four, but I've only actually ever seen the the hard copies for three volumes, which cover the period up to the end of 1946, have been translated. These are not online, but maybe we could think of a project to scan them in and make them available. It would take a long time as there are about 600 pages in each volume. Right, and question number three from Paula, and this was a bit of a difficult question. Are the veterinary services for pets also free in charge of people in the DPRK? I assume it must be free for the veterinary services involved in farming for sanitary reason. But is is it also that way with pets? And my answer was this is a subject I do not have much information about, partly because people having domestic pets other than goldfish in the DPRK is something relatively new. It's something that's become common in within, I think, the last 25, possibly 30 years. As you say, veterinary treatments is free for farm animals in the DPRK, is part of state support for agriculture and also the need to prevent disease in the rural area. I put the question to the embassy, but they said that although they they knew that there is a veterinary service in the DPRK, they are not sure whether it is actually free. I would just point out that the DPRK itself does have several universities of veterinary science, for example, the Fyongsong University of Veterinary Science and Animal Husbandry. There's also an animal hospital at the Central Zoo in Pyongyang. My assumption, I'm making an assumption here, is that veterinary universities would provide veterinary treatment free as part of the teaching programme, that is my answer. You know, I'm sorry if the the answer is not fully satisfactory. So those are my the answers to the questions that I received through email and through messenger and through telegram. I hope that that satisfies people. Right, okay, couple of questions coming up. I'll take the wait for David to put his additional questions. I think I think this comes from Gareth, I believe. Pro UK now China owned South China Morning Post has been retweet spreading active propaganda against DPRK as if DPRK was destroying peace of mind of ordinary Korean people. Can DPRK demand that this China owned bourgeois newspaper refrain itself from lying? Well, I'm sure they, the DPRK will possibly will make a complaint behind closed doors to the Chinese authority about this. This is a long running problem with the Chinese media. Back in 2012, the DPRK had hit back at some misleading reports in the Chinese media and very negative reports, so they struck back at it. Then in 2017, the DPRK were quite fed up with a number of hostile articles in the Chinese media and responded to them. And there was an article written under the pen name of Kim Cho. I don't know who that person really was, but the article, there was an article by Kim Cho saying, "Are you good at dancing to the tune of others?" And the DPRK responded with several articles harshly, you know, which were very strongly critical of China. And this went on for for some time until the Chinese reined in their media and stopped it, you know, it was part of negotiations between the DPRK and China. So I'm sure the DPRK will make some response to 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 these articles. I mean, in South China Morning Post, he's very problematic paper anyway. I mean, it used to be part of the Murdoch business empire. You know, it's now owned by Alibaba, the Chinese capitalist company. But, you know, it it's still got the same line that it had when it was part of the Murdoch empire. You know, it's got a it's got a very anti DPRK line because traditionally in the past, you know, going back a long way, this was a Hong Kong paper that actually took a very anti-communist line and was both anti DPRK and anti-China, but it's just anti DPRK now. You know, I hope I hope that answers the question, comrade. Right, does the DPRK have heavy metal music? Well, the the basic, basic answer is no. DPRK develops its music according to its national tastes. And I don't, you know, heavy metal really sort of comes into that. I mean, it does have anti-imperialist, a lot of anti-imperialist music. I mean, all, I think most DPRK music is anti-imperialist. There is the famous DPRK song, Death to the US Imperialist Aggressors, which I will just find put in the put in the chat, find a nice recording of that. There was, it was a very good good version of that. Try and check this one.
Found the version and send it into the chat.
Jeremy's already put put a couple of links. Yeah, and also the very controversial Slovenian rock band or industrial rock band, Layback, visited the DPRK in 2015. That is sort of in impact. I think in on the DPRK was was not very strong.
Can you write the the name of the bands written which visited the DPRK?
Like I think Paula wrote it already, but it's it's layback. I mean, I think I think it was very, very controversial and it was actually a dodgy Norwegian music promoter, you know, one of these fake friends, the DPRK, who who arranged for them to visit the DPRK. I think he saw it as as an effort to try and arrange, try and encourage reform and opening up in the DPRK. I mean, they're a very, very controversial band and I, some of their music, I don't, don't like at all. You know, they they actually began life under the old former Yugoslavia and were actually quite anti-communist. And I think a lot of their music is dubious, but I suppose this goes to show that the DPRK is not a closed country like some people say. Right, from Ben, yes, good question, Ben. Can you explain how music training proceeds with children in the DPRK? Do all children have access to musical training? What percentage of children end up end up learning an instrument? When children are especially good, do they go to special institutes? Also, what about singing? Do most children learn to sing as part of universal education, so all citizens can participate in communal singing? Do teenagers form bands as we do? Do adult bands practise together? Where can they perform if they want to have a gig? That's a very long question, Ben. Pity couldn't have sent that to me in in the sort of run up to the the meeting. But, you know, I understand it, you're obviously very busy. There's actually several questions there. Basically, to give you answers off the top of my head, the percentage of children who can learn a musical instrument is 100%. As President Kim Il-sung himself said, that everybody should be able to play a musical instrument. And by basically, children can learn to sing and play musical instruments in kindergartens and schools, but also more importantly, at extracurricular, extracurricular, sorry, stumbling over that nearly, extracurricular educational bases such as the child, children and students palaces. And in Pyongyang, there's two of those. There's the older Pyongyang Children's Palace in the centre of Pyongyang and the much newer Mangyong Day Children's Palace in the south of Pyongyang, which is very big and which I've visited a number of times. And there, children learn things like playing musical instruments such as the kaeogum. I hope I've pronounced that rightly, but that is a traditional Korean instrument. They learn to play that violins, they learn to dance, they learn to sing and also do stuff like basketball and swimming there. So yeah, and when children are especially good, yes, they can go to special institutes to learn. And yeah, they do indeed form bands and the famous Morimbong Band really began as you know, where a group of girls from an art circle of a secondary school met. And they also practised at the Mangyong Day Children's Palace. And that's how the Morimbong Band came came together. Where where can they perform if they want to have a gig? Well, in in the DPRK, there are houses of culture everywhere. And the DPRK strongly encourages amateur performances very strongly. And there's even a TV talent show as well, which people can get on to. So, I mean, this, the DPRK encourages mass artistic, literary and musical activities. So I've tried to answer your questions as best I can, Ben. Maybe we can take another time or we can write an article for People's Korea the day on the subject. Jeremy, you've got your hand up.
Yes, I just wanted to say that the all the people, all the children in People's Korea are able to learn a music instrument because of the independent policy of the DPRK. So my grandmother was from Turkey, said to me that before Turkey became an American vessel state. They actually had all the students, all the pupils at the school would learn to play a music instrument and would learn to sing. Had a very good independent education system, but Americans started to send them help. They sent them milk powder for the schoolchildren and took over and destroyed everything independent and creative in the state and the education system. So DPRK is only able to give the children that creative and musical education because of its independent policy, because they don't go down to the American empire.
Yes, that's that's very correct. Thank you for your your comments. Jeremy, yeah, I mean, Paula's put in the chat about the documentary about Layback. And I think a lot of that documentary was basically anti DPRK and anti-communist. I saw quite a few familiar faces in it, such as several comrades from the former DPRK Committee for Cultural Relations with foreign countries. Okay, let's see how we're we're going. Thanks for the link to the book about socialist education. Yeah, and as People's Korea rightly points out, there are community centres, you know, these are houses of culture where housewives can sing and it's very popular and the People's Neighbourhood units also organise them, organise singing groups as well as factories. As I said, there are mass musical activities in the DPRK as well as mass literary activities. Okay, someone's, I think someone's typing a question. We take a few more questions, then we move on to reading the two texts. You just wait. Ben's typing as well. I'll just wait for people to type out and then then I'll answer. Right, sort of a statement and a question. Yes, we can try our best to introduce the works of President Kim Il-sung and indeed also Chairman Kim Jong-il and Marshal Kim Jong-un to high school students, really in any country. I mean, we would encourage people to to study the works of the great leaders, not not simply for people to ask questions, but people to actually study. There's now many online PDFs available. So, you know, these these can be made available free of charge. You know, I hope I've understood the question correctly. Can we give feedback to the DPRK? Yeah, I mean, we could, you know, ask for film of factory choirs. You know, and community choirs in houses of culture, we could ask for that. I mean, sometimes, I haven't seen it recently on KC TV, but, you know, when I've actually been in the DPRK and watched the television, you will see the actual talent contest, you know, people, different people singing, you know, and the judges praising it. But unfortunately, I've not seen this on any of the DPRK YouTube channels. But I know some of them have been been, you know, taken down, which which doesn't help. Okay, some more. Yeah, I'll just, Jeremy, I'll just answer the the
I was about to question before about television and challenges, the contests. So I saw that one act, that one song by an group, an amateur group was uploaded by PRG Daily. I remember that it was, I don't remember the name, but I can send it to the group chat.
Yes, yes, that would be good if we can. Right, I'm just scrolling down. Is Christmas celebrated in in the DPRK? Well, there's two answers to that. I mean firstly, most of the population of the DPRK are atheists and they do not bother with Christmas. However, it is celebrated in some of the hotels for foreign guests who observe Christmas. And you can either, you can even get a Christmas dinner in 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 the DPRK in some in some of the hotels. And obviously, those Christian denominations that exist in the DPRK, Catholic, Protestant and Russian Orthodox, will organise their their own services for Christmas. But by by and large, it is it is something you know, that is is not bothered with in in the DPRK. But of course, they do celebrate the New Year in a very big way. That's if if I can find it, I'm going to put it on KFA social media in about a week's time. There is a DPRK Christmas jingle where they, I mean, they have you know, they they have translated jingle bells in Korean into Korean. And I usually share this for And I usually share this for. Yeah, well, no. Like you say, Christmas is known in the DPRK, but as I say, it's not, it's just not upheld by most most of the population. Yeah, I agree. It's the rising culture of DPRK that sets the country apart. Okay, do we do we have any other other questions? Oh, yes, very good link to motivational choir choir. I mean, just slightly digressing from the the main subject. I mean, this doesn't really relate to music, but also in in the DPRK, you will see in the early mornings teams of housewives waving red flags and banging drums as as part of the effort to motivate people. Ah, very good, Jeremy. Well done. He's Jeremy has found found a sort of amateur group.
This is from the 16th National Amateur Singing Contest in 2019. That's the winner group, the winning band.
Yes, that's 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 very good and very useful. Thank you for finding that. Do we have any other questions? Ben is typing, so I'll just wait.
I have the question.
Oh, yes, let's go ahead.
Yeah, I have for China, built in the DPRK electric cars and and also the basis and so here's why I think I also electric. It's in your plan. Making also for the DPRK electric cars.
I've not heard of any plan to make all the cars electric. In fact, I haven't seen, there's some electric cars, but not not many. Of course, the electric buses have existed for a very long time, the trolley buses, they they've always been there since the nineteen nineteen sixties, in fact, the nineteen fifties. I've not heard of no plan to introduce electric cars on a wide scale. Right, okay, well, Ben has suggested that we, yeah, I can, or maybe Jeremy can do it.
I guess, of course, one moment.
Yeah, Jeremy's gonna do it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Can you see it?
I can see it can't hear. Right, thank you very much, Jeremy. You know, it's useful. We just take one more question and then we're gonna read from the two texts and I'll I'll put the texts that we're going to read from tonight. We hope to sort of finish them tonight. While I do that, if anybody's got one final question. Yes, Jeremy, you raised your hand.
So now that the terrorists took over Syria and the legitimate Syrian president Bashar al-Assad had to flee the country. How will the DPRK's Syria relations continue? Will there be an exile government of Syria, which the DPRK will support? Or will they recognize the new government and will they have diplomatic relations with them?
Right, well, you know, we wait. I'm waiting for an announcement about the from the DPRK about that. I'm not I'm not sure about, you know, what will happen. I mean, I think the clique that sees power in Syria will probably break relations with the DPRK. In fact, I don't know what the fate of the DPRK embassy in Damascus is. No, no one seems to know. The Iranian embassy in Damascus was burnt down. I don't know if the DPRK embassy has been attacked. I mean, as to the formation of a government in exile, Assad himself was given political asylum in the Russian Federation by President Putin. And he announced that he was stepping away from politics. So I don't know if a government in exile is being formed or whether the Ba'ath Party in Syria is going to organize resistance. Also, there's two communist parties in Syria that were part of the old government. You know, I don't know what's happening to those parties. I think it is probably very doubtful that the DPRK will recognize the new government and I suspect the people who've taken power are probably very anti DPRK and will prob, like I said, I think will probably break relations with the DPRK anyway. But so far, I've seen no sign that the DPRK is is recognizing these scoundrels who have seized power in the Syrian Arab Republic. You know, that's that is the best best I can answer, but certainly there's been no DPRK recognition of this this new new regime in Syria.
Thank you very much for your answer. It's a very depressing topic.
Yes, it is not a good topic, but I think you missed my my short intro. You know, where I pointed out that, I don't know if you 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 know her, but Syrian girl on Twitter, who has very big following. She has now called for support for the DPRK and saying the DPRK is a country we must learn from. I mean, she previously, she was a very strong supporter of Assad and a very strong anti-imperialist. Yeah, I mean, it is it is a big setback, but we we should not let ourselves be disillusioned by or defeatist. In my own personal opinion, and I'm giving a personal opinion, which is not necessarily that of KFA UK or the British Group for the Study of the Duchy of Deir or or even the DPRK itself. So I hope no one thinks so. I'm speaking on behalf of the DPRK, but I think the lesson of the Syrian situation is is at least twofold. Firstly, that internal traitors are very dangerous. Because Syria was betrayed by the actions of internal traitors. You know, they they deliberately pulled the army back and surrendered. And also that a country shouldn't leave its defense to others, which the DPRK have always said, you know, Syria relied a lot on Russian help, Iranian help, help from Hezbollah. You know, all those forces to try and help, you know, fight the imperialists and in the end it didn't work. That is my opinion, but, you know, I think we we mustn't be defeatist. You know, we we must, you know, move on from from this. Right, okay, well, we're gonna start, you know, reading from the text and I'm gonna start with the I'll just wait to see what people are typing before we start. Yes, Assad, whatever merits he he had in the past, I mean, one thing, he was not, he was not self-reliant. Yeah, I mean, again, I agree with with Ben. We're getting starting to stray a bit from the topic. Okay, well, anyway. We now get going to first read from questions and answers on the Song of My Dear. And which was published in the DPRK back in 2012 and given to delegates to the World Congress on the Duchy of Deir. And it's a series of questions and answers and we got up to question 90. 90, what does it mean that the army is put up as the main force of the revolution? Answer, it means that the army is the main force for promoting the revolution construction and everything is done by relying on it as the pacemaker. 91, what are the contents of the principle putting the army up as the main force of the revolution? Answer, the principle has two main contents. The first is to regard the army as the most potent force and entirely depend on it in all affairs of the revolution construction. The second is to put the army in the van and push forward the revolution construction by concerted efforts of the army and people. Question 92, why should the army be regarded as the most potent force, be depended on entirely? Answer, because the army is a political force with a higher revolutionary spirit, organizational sense and combat capacity than any social class stratum or group. It is the main force making miracles and innovations, not only on the anti-imperialist military front, but in the economic and cultural construction, the revolution construction, therefore can emerge victories only by putting up the army as the pillar and fully depending on it in all fields of the revolution and construction. 93, why should the army be put in the van and the revolution construction be propelled by concerted efforts of the army and people? Answer, putting up the army as the main force of the revolution never means dependence only on the army. The army is the only is only the vanguard and shock force that makes a breach advance at the head of the people and arouses the masses to heroic struggle. The revolution construction can successfully advance when older people turn out with the army in the lead in army-people unity. Question 94. What is army-people unity? Answer, army-people unity means the consensus of ideas and fighting ardor of the army and the people based on the revolutionary soldier spirit. Question 95, what should be done to adhere to the principle putting up the army as the main force of revolution? Answer, the army should be built up solidly into a revolutionary Answer, the army should be built up solidly into a revolutionary force equipped with qualities and traits worthy of the main force of the revolution. And also, the army should be actively engaged and encouraged to set fine examples in practical work, social construction. Further, the consensus of ideas and fighting ardor of the army and the people should be firmly maintained. Ninety-six, what is clarified by the Songham leadership system? The Songham idea newly sheds light on the idea and theory of the Songham leadership system, which embodies the principal Songham. The Songham leadership system contains the supreme commander's monolithic system of leadership and a system of state administration, but the main stress on national defence. Ninety-seven, what is the supreme commander's monolithic system of leadership? Answer, it is a system of leadership under which all problems arising in the revolution construction are solved in conformity. For the supreme commander's fault and purpose and all the party army people act like one organisation under his monolithic guidance and unconditionally accept and thoroughly carry out his intentions, orders and instructions. Ninety-eight, what is the system of state administration with the main stress on national defence? Answer is state machinery and the state control system under which the state apparatus is set up. But the National Defence Commission, as it's called, direct state and social life as a whole. And the principle of setting down military affairs as the most important of all affairs in state administration and subordinating everything to them. Ninety-nine, where do the validity, vitality of the Songham idea find expression? Answer, first, I find expression in the fact that the Korean people have crushed the aggression and war moves of the United States and its followers and defended their country and nation and socialism. It is a valuable fruit, the Songham idea, that the Korean people have defended and glorified their country and nation, the socialism, in a showdown with the United States for more than half a century. Secondly, they find expression in the fact that revolutionary ranks have been more firmly united and that the single-hearted unity of the whole society has been further strengthened. The army and people of Korea have been more firmly united in the genuinely comradesly relationship. And the political and ideological might of the Korean Revolution has increased incomparably under the guidance of the leader, Kim Jong-il. This is precious fruit of the exertions to imbue the whole society with the Songham idea. Thirdly, they find expression in the fact that New Turn has come about the endeavours to build a powerful socialist nation. The People's Army takes the lead and all the people pave the way in a body for building a powerful socialist nation. This proves that advancing under the banner of Songham, the Korean people can attain the lofty goal, building a powerful nation without fail. Fourthly, they find the expression in the fact that a turning point was marked in the struggle for national reunification. Fifthly, they find expression in the fact that the international prestige of Korea has risen higher. And the enthusiasm of progressive people of the world for independence is running very high. A change has taken place in the foreign relations of Korea with Western European and many other countries that were indifferent or hostile in the past, coming to establish diplomatic relations with her. While the world public recognises the invincibility of Korea that advances under the banner of Songham. The Songham idea and Songham politics deal hard blows at the imperialist aggressive forces on a worldwide scale, encouraging the anti-imperialist forces of independence and give forceful impetus to the human cause of independence. Question one hundred, what is the historical position of the Songham idea? Answer, the Songham idea is a great revolutionary banner of the contemporary times that pioneers and guides the Songham idea along the road of victory under the banner of the idea based on the Dzuchadir. It is a perfect revolutionary idea illuminating the revolutionary theory, strategy and tactics for advancing the people's cause of independence successfully in any conditions and circumstances. And it is a revolutionary idea that gives perfect answers to all theoretical and practical problems arising in defending socialism and building a powerful socialist nation amidst fierce confrontation with imperialism. And now to read from the book Dzuchadir Answers to One Hundred Questions. And we got up to question eighty-one. What should be done to build the self-supporting national economy? The construction of the self-supporting economy necessitates adherence to the self-reliant principle in the economic construction. The economy should be developed in a diverse and comprehensive way. It is important to provide latest techniques for the economy and train a great number of technical personnel. Basis that produce raw materials and fill with locally available materials should be built. Question eighty-two, what does it mean to carry out the principle of adhering to self-reliance in national defence? Answer, holding fast to self-reliance in national defence is the guiding principle of applying independence to the sector of national defence. To carry out the principle of maintaining self-reliance in national defence means to defend the country with one's own efforts. In other words, it means that each country has to build a strong military power with which to defend the country and its own efforts and solve all the problems arising in the construction of national defence and military activities in line with the interests of the people and the actual conditions of the country. Question eighty-three, why does the principle maintaining self-reliance in national defence have to be carried out? Answer, self-reliance in national defence is one of the main symbols for an independent sovereign state. As long as imperialism exists, the country without the self-defensive military might cannot be actually a completely sovereign state. Self-reliance in national defence is a military guarantee for the country's political independence and economic self-support. Only when a country adheres to the self-reliant defence in national defence can it repulse imperialist aggression and intervention, achieve political independence and economic self-support and defend the social system and people's safety. Question eighty-four, what should be done to carry out the principle of self-reliance in defence? It is, answer, it is essential to build self-defensive armed forces to carry out the principle of self-reliance in national defence. It is important to establish an all-people nationwide defence system. To this end, it is necessary to turn the whole army into an army of cadres, update it, arm the whole, the entire population and make the whole country a fortress. It is imperative to give full play to the political and ideological superiority of the revolutionary armed forces. The self-reliant defence industry should be built and the rear should be strengthened. Question eighty-five, what are the creative methods? The creative methods are to rely on the popular masses and do things in accordance with the actual conditions. The methods make it possible to step up the revolution in construction markedly by giving the fullest play to the people's role, revolutionary enthusiasm and creative initiative. Question eighty-six, what does it mean to rely on the popular masses? Answer, to rely on the popular masses means to solve all the problems arising in the revolution and construction by relying on their strength and making the most of their creativity. Question eighty-seven, why do the revolution construction have to be pushed by relying on the popular masses? Answer, it is because the popular masses are a key player in pushing the revolution construction. It is the popular masses with an inexhaustible creative ability who play a decisive role in carrying out the revolution construction. Only when one relies on the popular masses can one solve any problem successfully and push the revolution in construction. Eighty-eight, what is important in carrying out the revolution construction by relying on the popular masses? Answer, an important thing in carrying out the revolution construction by relying on the popular masses is to work out lines and policies by representing the demand and aspirations of the masses and make then their own affairs that they have to deal with. Another one is to rally the popular masses into a political force. It is also necessary to oppose all sorts of the old that hampers innovation. It is important to conduct mass movements on a large scale. Revolutionary methods of work should be established. Eighty-nine, what does it mean to do things in accordance with the actual conditions? Answer, it means solving all the problems creatively in accordance with the actual conditions that changes and develops the specific conditions of the country. Ninety, why do the revolution construction have to be carried out in line with the actual conditions? Answer, it is because the revolution construction are carried out in different periods in specific environments of each country. In the revolution construction, there is no right way that suits both all ages and all countries. Therefore, all the problems should always be solved creatively in keeping with the actual conditions by starting from the reality. Ninety-one, what is important in carrying out the revolution construction in line with one's own specific situation? Answer, an important thing in pushing the revolution construction in line with one's actual conditions is to take subjective and objective conditions in the revolution of one's own country into full consideration and work out lines, policies, strategies and tactics according to them. It is also important to approach the established theories properly. When approaching prepositions and formulas of the previous theories, one should study what requirements of the times they reflected and from what premises they came and apply them to meet one's specific reality according to one's own characteristics. It is also necessary to explore new principles and ways to carry out the revolution construction in line with the historical conditions of the times and one's own specific situation. It is important to approach each other's experience critically and creatively. Ninety-two, what is the principle of placing the main stress on ideology? Answer, giving priority to the ideological transformation, political work constitutes the principle of placing the main emphasis on ideology. The principle guarantees the principles of maintaining the independent stand and applying the creative methods in the revolution and construction. Ninety-three, what does it mean to give priority to the ideological transformation? Answer, it means placing above all other work, the training of people into genuine social beings by transforming their ideological consciousness. Ninety-four, why should priority be given to ideological transformation? Answer, because it is essential in remoulding the people into genuine social beings. The ideological transformation is also more difficult than the improvement of material life and the ideological, the cultural and technical development. The ideological transformation is a serious revolution. Question ninety-five, what does it mean to give precedence to political work? Answer, it means arming the popular masses with the party's lines and policies ahead of all other work and arousing their revolutionary enthusiasm so that they wage the revolutionary struggle and construction work successfully by a high degree of consciousness and positiveness. Question ninety-six, why does precedence have to be given to political work? It is because, answer, it is because political work is an indispensable need for successfully pushing the revolution construction. As the revolution and construction are carried out by people, their success depends on how work among the people is conducted. Work among the people is in essence political work and work with people's ideology. So priority should be given to political work that stimulates the people's ideology in order to carry out the revolution construction successfully. Question ninety-seven, what is important in applying the principle of giving precedence to political work? Answer, it is important to properly combine the administrative technical and economic affairs with political work while giving precedence to it. Main emphasis should be placed on political and moral incentives, material incentives would be combined with them properly. Political work should be relied on and on scientific and revolutionary methods. It should be conducted by way of persuasion and education in diverse forms and methods. It should also be conducted by the popular masses themselves. It should be combined closely with revolutionary practice. Ninety-eight, what is the historic position of the Dzuchadir? Answer, the Dzuchadir is a perfect revolutionary idea which has reached the highest stage in the development of revolutionary ideas fundamentally different from previous philosophies. The Dzuchadir is based on a man-centered philosophical principle and shows the most correct way for carrying out man's destiny. It explains the contents of the revolutionary outlook on the world convincingly and perfectly. And it is a great idea that represents the present age and the whole historical period. It gives perfect answers to all the problems arising in the revolutionary practice at present when the popular masses are fighting for national liberation and class and human emancipation after emerging as the master of history and their destiny. It also deals with the issue of future society where independence of the popular masses will have been fully provided throughout the world. Ninety-nine, how have the study dissemination of the Dzuchadir been conducted over the world? Answer, teachers and students of a teacher training college in Mali formed the Group for Studying Comrade Kynaston's Work, first works, the first Dzuchadir study group in the world in April nineteen sixty-nine. Since then, the national and regional organisations for studying the Dzuchadir have been formed throughout the world. Against this background, the International Institute, the Dzuchadir was inaugurated in April nineteen seventy-eight. At present, there are more than At present, there are more than one thousand study groups and twenty-seven national committees in some. Hundred and ten countries as well as four regional organizations in four continents. The International Institute, the Duchy idea, has a pyramid-type structure. For studying and disseminating the Duchy idea activities. Because studying, disseminating the Duchy idea have been conducted worldwide on the basis of the well-functioning. System. The board of the International Institute, the Duchy idea, decided. At the thirteenth in large meeting of its executive committee in April. Two thousand and eleven, to hold a world conference on the Duchy idea in Pyongyang, the DPRK, the home. To the Duchy idea in commemoration of the Day of the Sun, April fifteenth in. Two thousand and twelve to mark the hundredth birthday of President Kim Il-sung. Question one hundred, what is the significance of the World Conference on the Duchy idea? Answer. The World Conference on the Duchy idea will contribute greatly to commemorating the hundredth birthday of President Kim Il-sung. Who performed brilliant exploits in the history of human form by establishing the immortal Duchy idea, a great event. In human history and a great political festival. It will be a historic occasion that he stalls the great exploits. President Kim Il-sung had performed in the Korean Revolution and the cause of making the whole world independent. At the banner of the Duchy idea and will prove the validity, vitality of the Duchy idea which has been inherited. Which is, which are being inherited by Sungam politics, developed and enriched by leader Kim Jong-il. It will be also a great help to invigorating the activities of Duchy idea study. Organizations and followers throughout the world stimulating study and disseminating of the idea. And that, that concludes the readings from those two works. So I think it's been a useful session tonight. And would just remind people that we have an online meeting on Monday. The sixteenth of December and this will be a memorial meeting for Chairman. Chairman Kim Jong-il who passed away on the. Seventeenth of December two thousand and eleven, so we will be having a. Humble meeting to commemorate his passing, so that will be online and it will be on the sixteenth. I do not know if anybody wants to add anything. Alan, if, if, do you want to add anything?
No, no, all is clear. It's all okay.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Paula, yeah, you put your, your hand up.
Um, yes, I just wanted also to remind you all that the twenty-fourth of December. Um, some of you will celebrate Christmas Eve. It's also the birthday of the ever-in, um, comrade Kim Jong-sook. The first wife of the eternal president Kim Jong-il, I'm sorry, Kim Il-sung. So just to let you all know. And it's also the birthday of Alejandro Caude Benos, by the way.
Oh, yes. Now, thank you very much for reminding us of both those events. I mean, I'm sure at the meeting on the sixteenth, we can find space if you want to make a. If you, if you'd like to sort of say a few words in tribute to Madame Kim Jong-sook, we, we would welcome that. If, if you wish, I think that's an important anniversary and of course. KFA UK sends, would send its best wishes to comrade Alejandro Caude Benos. KFA president on the occasion of his, I believe it's his fiftieth birthday. So we would wish him well. Maybe we can have a short, a short. Presentation of at the meeting on the subject. Okay, any, anyone else? Alan, you've got anything you wanted to add? Jeremy, okay, Jeremy, yes, go ahead.
Um, because we mentioned the birthdays of Alejandro and Kim Jong-sook. I just wanted to mention that the twenty-first of December is the birthday of Generalissimus Stalin.
Yes, thank you very much, Jeremy. Yes, that's another. Another important anniversary. Yes, Alan, please speak. Yes, go ahead.
I might like to say one thing in the future in New Year. Korean Friendship Association UK, together with Radio Bevarus, is planning to organize big online event. That will be online international online conference on the topic Democratic People's Republic of Korea. The leader of the anti-imperialist struggle and the advocate of world peace. Whoever would like to take a part of this, it is planning on second week of January, please let me know. It will be published soon, the program, everything. So I like to invite everyone, Paula, Jeremy, if anyone would like to. Take a part of this conference, which will be organized by Radio Bevarus, online conference, please let me know. And I will remind in the future time also, closer time about this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Alan. I, I very much hope to be able to participate and I'm sure. Sure others will, will be able to. Right, just wait for the comment. Yes, I think that's a good idea to read from Socialism is a science. That's a very valuable work. Comrade Alan raised his hand. Yes, yes, go ahead, Alan.
Oh no, I forgot to put it down. Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, to the conference, yes, Paula, Jeremy, soon I will send the invitation personally on, on emails or any kind of contacts with you. Also, we like to invite Comrade Alejandro, if he will be able on the second wing of January, but the details will be confirmed soon. That we're planning also maybe invite someone from CAS of DPRK or any organization to be closer. Probably there will be invite also from Bevarusan DPRK Embassy in Minsk, but it's not confirmed yet. So the soon will be all the details sending around. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Alan. Okay, I'm just, couple people typing things, I think Ben's typing something. Well, you're, you're very welcome, Ben. Just wait for one. Well, good luck with your, your protest, comrade. I hope it goes well. Long, long live People's Korea, long live Duche. Good luck at your protest. Mensei.
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 Well, before we go, I've just got a very short clip to, to share. It's very short, it's only a, a about forty seconds, I'll just. See if I can. There we are. I hope everybody.
In September nineteen seventy-four, Syrian president Haqqis al-Assad met Kim Il-sung. And told him that he was greatly impressed by the fact that Kim Il-sung had created brilliant example. By applying the Duche idea in all fields of social life. Then he control the supreme civilian order on the Korean leader.
Right, okay, well, thank everybody for their attention. I'll just wait for Alan and Ben. Yeah, I mean, I think I already posted that on Facebook, but I can post it on Telegram as well. I'll do that. Okay, well, I think that's it. I think that's it. I think there's no further comments or questions. Thank everybody for attending tonight. I think it's been quite good. You know, I had a reasonable number of people here. So, you know, I wish everybody a good evening and if I don't see you at the event on the sixteenth. I wish everybody all greetings of the season and hope you can all enjoy the festive season. So it's good night for me and Mensei, long live KFA UK and long live KFA. Good night.
Mensei.
Good night.
Mensei.
Good night, comrades.
Good night.
Mensei.
Mensei.
Mensei.